Let the records reflect that all board members are present. Excuse me. Flag salute. Kevin, can you lead us to the flag salute?
Place your right hand over your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments.
Move to the public comments. This is a time that anyone who wishes to address the library board can speak about things that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address us? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Of the approval.
We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Any of the comments? Please vote. That motion passes 5-2-0. We have any legal counsel, any items?
No items.
Any comments from board members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn.
Staff?
Mr. President, did you want a library report from our representative?
Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, and I knew I was gonna do it, too. We do have a library report. One of our fearless leaders here this evening, and I just talked to him about the library report. Keep us going.
Good evening. To anyone who might be watching who isn't familiar with me, my name is Joseph Mangold, and I'm the interim library director now at the library. And I wanted to take a moment to go over some of the exciting events that we're going over throughout this summer, because as many organizations tend to ramp down during summer, it's actually the library's prime time. This year, more so than normal, because we also have our annual Camrio Reads One City One Book event that's happening this month. We're reading Etched in Sand, and this is an event where we endeavor as the library to try and turn the entire community into one giant book club. So, we encourage everyone to come on down to the library who's interested. We have hundreds of copies of Etched in Sand. We still have copies available, and we can get that in your hands, because at the end of this month, we'll have Regina Calcaterra, who is the author of Etched in Sand. She'll be visiting the library on the 29th, which is the last Sunday of the month, at 2:00 p.m. And that'll be an author talk and a book signing event, and it's a big community engagement. We encourage everyone to come down. Anyone interested in coming, we also encourage to come a little bit early, because it is a very popular event, and seating can get limited based on the amount of attendance we have. Beyond that, though, this is also a very big time for kids and teens throughout our community, as we're doing our summer reading program continuing. We're hitting record highs for this time of the year. We've already got nearly 1,000 participants already registered. Some have already completed their first round of summer reading. To anyone who's unfamiliar, that might be watching with what summer reading is, it's a community engagement program where we challenge the youth in our community to read throughout the summer during their summer breaks. Participating in the program can get prizes based on the amount of materials that are read throughout the summer and the time committed to the program. Additionally, we do have, I mentioned this last month, but our Wacky Wednesday programs continue. These will be going through August 22nd. They're designed for kids and their families. We do them twice a day on Wednesdays, and these are at 10:00 in the morning and at 2:00 in the afternoon. They're fun activities. They range from science to puppet shows, but they're intended to be a lot of fun, get people in the library, get people connected to the summer reading program. We are encouraging people interested to attend the 2:00 p.m. showings, because the 10:00 has been getting a lot of attendance. And again, if we have to start turning people away, we recommend if you're looking to come, to come at the 2:00 p.m. slot. Moving forward, we are continuing our popular Pause for Reading program, which normally goes throughout the year. Young people who are looking to learn and be encouraged to read, have a chance to read with therapy dogs. It is at a different time, so that's why I wanted to mention it. It's always a popular program, but during the summer until August 20th, we'll be running this program on Mondays at 11:00 in the morning, which is different from the afternoons we do during the school year. Moving away from families, we do have continued business programs through our Russell Fisher Business Collection. They have a full suite of programming this month, and I do encourage anyone to look at our newsletter, check out our website. But I did want to mention an event that is highly anticipated coming this Friday. At 12:00 p.m., we will be doing a Small Business Loan Options lecture, where any local entrepreneurs and small businesses can come to get information about the various loan options that are available to those types of endeavors. And there's a lot of excitement around that. That, again, is gonna be Friday at 12:00 p.m.
Where does it held? What part of the building, upstairs?
That'll actually be in the community room, just so we can hold a larger group. But that's, as you're entering the library, that'll be off on the right-hand side, right in the courtyard. That's all I have for you this evening, unless there are any questions.
Can you just make a comment? I've been over twice in the last two weeks, and one time is late in the afternoon, and there was a whole class, right there in front, next to the coffee shop. They were learning to improve their English. They were there teaching them, being tutors. I thought that was fantastic.
Yeah, the library, it's one of the, not well-known, but is a constant program we're doing. We have both English Second Language and our adult literacy programs. Both are actually partnered with the local Oxnard Adult School, which is part of the Oxnard Union School District.
And the other one, I was there again yesterday, and I'm just surprised that that whole lobby there in front of the coffee shop is full. There's a lot of people.
Yes, this definitely is our big, big time of the month, or of the year. We have more visitors throughout the summer than we have any other time of the year.
Good. Any other comments? Charlotte?
Yeah, I just have one thing, and I realize you're an interim director, but in the past, when the library flyers have come out, the director's always brought one to us.
Oh, I can make sure that begins again.
We each get one.
Yeah, I'll be sure to bring some.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry, you have one. I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes.
It's just a compliment to you and to library staff for all of the programs going on during the summer, and I want to thank you for all your efforts, and especially for the summer reading program, because just since the kids are not in school, doesn't mean that they need to keep up particularly on their reading skills. And sometimes teachers have a tendency to notice that when the kids come back to school in the fall, there hasn't been as much progress made as there could have been during the summer, and that's why I think you're, I really want to compliment you and library staff. So, thank you.
Thank you. We love what we do.
It shows. Comments? Thank you for your presentation. See you next time. We're now adjourned.
Okay, we'll call the meeting of the Camrio Sanitary District to order. Let the record reflect that all directors are here. Do I have any public comments for the Camrio Sanitary District? Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar.
Of the approval.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Please vote. And that's adopted unanimously on a 5-0 vote. There are no departmental items, no items from council. Are there comments from staff? Mr. Council? No comments? Any comments from directors? No comments, and with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting of the sanitary district.
Call the meeting of the Camrio City Council to order and ask the record to reflect that all council members are present. Are there any amendments to this agenda?
Madam Mayor, we would request that Item 5A Pension Rate Stabilization Program Trust Resolution be moved up under 4B. For the sake of, for the sake of that presentation, we have some professionals who have come up for this, and we want to make sure that they can get the job done.
After 4B is in Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any others?
Oh, Your Honor, I would like on the consent calendar to pull H, I, and J.
And they go to?
Oh, they probably all go to Public Works.
H, I, and J?
Oh, I don't know about L. L could be Public Works.
You didn't say L before. You just said H, I, and J.
Oh, I said J instead of L. I'm sorry. It should be L, I'm sorry.
Not J?
Not J, I'm sorry.
Okay, so H, I, and L will all go to Public Works.
Yes, they're all Public Works.
I'm sorry. Tell me what number Public Works is. I'm not finding it.
They are, oops, there's nothing in there tonight.
Six.
I thought he was gonna get off easy.
H, I, and L. Okay. Anything else?
I have one.
You have one?
And it's just a question. It's actually on K, so when we get there, I just have a question.
Okay.
It's the clarification of the urgency.
Okay, we're not there yet. Anything else on this? Okay, so those are amendments to the agenda. Now, we are on consent calendar, and we'll be talking about the consent calendar with the exception of Items H, I, and L, which are moving to Public Works, but you have a question on K, Mr. Kildee.
Yes. On the item, the street pole light that was replaced, and apparently it was grandfathered. And the question I have, are there other poles in the city that are grandfathered, too? And if so, would we want to replace those before it becomes really egregious where we have to, especially if they're relatively at a busier intersection? That's a good question.
Right. I mean, this is all in reaction to an accident, unplanned event, which, you know, unfortunately, that happens from time to time. The other location, and this is unique in that the traffic signal equipment is on a Marlboro Light Edison-owned streetlight pole, as opposed to a separate dedicated signal pole. So, you know, in our review of the other locations, there isn't anything urgent or pressing that we would need to change out anywhere else, you know, with those similar type of locations, so.
Okay.
We're taking care of this one as a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the consent?
Madam?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I was gonna go ahead and make a motion if you thought appropriate.
Go ahead.
My motion would be to move consent items, for approval, consent items A through G, J, K, M, and N.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Items H, I, and L. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Hey, gets us down to City Council, grand jury, annual detention report. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Commander Murray will be giving that report.
City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager Dave Norman and City Staff. Good evening. Some background information with respect to the PREA issue and this inspection. Earlier this year, the Ventura County Grand Jury conducted its annual inspection of all of the holding and detention facilities within Ventura County, which included the Camrio P.D. holding area. The grand jury issued its annual detention report this past May, and their only recommendation for Camrio P.D. was that the absence of PREA standards exposes the city to potential liability. The same recommendation applied to every police agency in the county, which included our jails. PREA, the Prison Rape Elimination Act, which was legislated in '03, requires all federal prison systems to follow strict guidelines and protocols with respect to allegations of sexual assault within those institutions. State and local detention facilities are not mandated to comply with PREA unless they house federal prisoners, which we do not. However, with that said, we do have a zero-tolerance policy. We are about 90% compliant already as we take sexual assault in this setting very seriously, and all allegations are thoroughly investigated. It's also important to draw distinctions between detention facilities and holding areas. Camrio P.D., for example, has a holding area where arrestees are temporarily held while being processed for transport to the jail, interviewed, or sighted from the station. They are not fed, they are not clothed, or housed at the P.D. In addition, all arrestees are separated upon arrest, and in cases where they are not, where there is not direct supervision, supervision is provided. Based upon these criteria, the Ventura County Sheriff's Office has provided the response included in your packet to the grand jury, recommendation which is the department's position for all of our contract cities that have holding areas. So, with that, that concludes the presentation. I'd like to entertain any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions? Mr. Tremblay?
Just a couple, Commander Murray. And this may be a question for Mr. Pyrick at the same time, too, because it's more of a contractual issue. When the grand jury issues its findings, it ends up making a legal conclusion, as it did under C-17. And right now, I'm on page, a big page 18 of the grand jury's report, and the grand jury tends to make these sweeping legal conclusions. But under the city's contract with the county, is it fair to say that if an issue came up under PRA, the county is actually the indemnitor and would be indemnifying the city of Camrio from any liability caused by negligence found under PRA?
Yes.
So, the assertion in C-17 is not accurate.
Correct. Based on the contract.
Based on the contract. I mean, I understand that the county is not, as a state or local agency, without federal prisoners, is not obligated to implement PREA.
Right.
And I'm trying to be sensitive to the issue.
Right.
It's a good thing, okay.
Sure.
But it's not legally required to do so, so any efforts by the sheriff's department and by Camrio P.D. in the cities that it serves is purely volitional on the part of the department, correct?
Yes.
What was that word?
Oh, voluntary. Volitional.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm lapsing. But anyway, it's voluntary. Well, you say you're trying to do, trying to do a good job. Anyway, let's go back to that question on indemnity, because I want to make sure through the city attorney that that's the case.
Yes, that's the case.
Well, if that's the case, I'm wondering whether or not the response ought to be amended to point out that the conclusion in C-17 is inaccurate. Why would the cities be subject to liability on a, why would the city Camrio be subject to liability on a contract basis if there's an indemnity clause in the agreement between the city and the county?
I could answer that one. An indemnity requirement under the contract does not mean that the city wouldn't necessarily be involved in some lawsuit. The city could be named. It's just that, because you don't know who they're gonna name in the lawsuit, and sometimes cities get named even though they have contracts for indemnity. And if that did happen, then the city would tender the defense to the county, which has been typical in, throughout the history with Camrio. If there's an issue that arises with respect to law enforcement or the jails, that is a matter that is handled by the county.
But that's both a defense as well as an indemnification liability.
Yes.
Defense and liability indemnification, right?
Yes.
Well, I just, I wonder whether or not we ought, this is a small thing, but I wonder whether or not we ought to amend the response to say to the grand jury, you should note. I don't know what the other cities have, but you should note that our contract with the county has such an indemnity clause.
Madam Mayor, it's the council's pleasure.
Would the other council members like to amend the response?
I have no problem with that. I think we'll find that often with the grand jury, some annual review of, sometimes, you know, they take things further than we might. But if, to clarify, I have no problem if that's just a clarification.
Being an attorney, I know Tony wants every little clarify, every little thing, and that's true. I agree with that.
Well, no, I respect that, I certainly respect the work that the grand jury does, but when the grand jury comes out with an assertion that isn't, in my mind, really accurate from a liability standpoint, I think it should be corrected.
But if Mr. Kildee says, it doesn't mean it's gonna keep us from being named, because they'll name everyone.
Oh, they'll name everybody, sure.
Mr. Kildee, do you have a problem with changing?
No, I agree with it.
Okay, let's amend it to indicate that the grand jury should note that.
Do it in a nice way.
Yes.
Oh, I was gonna, yes, certainly. Do it in a nice way.
Okay. I just had one comment, and I noticed in C-18, they can, concluded that it was unsatisfactory for safety and liability purposes, that seven out of 10 holding facilities did not have current fire, life, safety certifications available for inspection, and Camrio was one that did.
Very good.
So, hooray for us and hooray for our facilities people. Okay, I need a motion on this. Mr. Tremblay?
Some moved with a revised form of letter to the grand jury.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item B, Citizens Initiative Measure for Term Limits, argument against the measure. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, this item is coming back to you following your adoption of the election resolutions in the first meeting in June. At that time, we said that we would bring back at this meeting the city's argument against the Citizens Initiative Measure, but in fact, we're requesting that we bring that back in the next meeting on July 25th, because that's still within the filing period, and that will give our drafters additional time to draft their argument against. So, the recommendation really is to continue this item to July 25th.
Is there any objection? Okay. This item will then be continued to the July 25th meeting. That brings us down to Finance, which is slipping right in there. Finance, a Pension Rate Stabilization Program Trust Resolution. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Mark Yarby. I'm the Assistant Director of Finance for the city. And the item you have before you is Part II of our two-phased approach to the implementation of a PERS Rate Stabilization Plan Trust. This is culmination of about 18 months of discussions and meetings to determine how we want to approach this. So, I have a couple of bullet points, just to give a little bit of the background. So, with the rising PERS pension costs facing all local agencies that participate in the pension plan, a lot of agencies are looking at ways to combat these fluctuations or changes arising PERS costs, pension costs. So, one of the tools available is a Rate Stabilization Plan Trust, and that's an irrevocable trust, meaning monies can be placed into it but can only be used for that specific purpose. They can't, we can't change our mind and pull the money back out to use it for, you know, construction projects, anything else of a general purpose. Once it's in, it's dedicated to that purpose. And what that does is it helps offset the unfunded actuarial liability, which is the difference between what PERS calculates that we will owe over a period of time, 30 years is their amortization period, and then what we have as far as what we've placed into the system as far as our assets. So, there's a little bit of a gap there. When I say a little bit, it's about $35 million, but that's about 30%. We're about 70% funded, which is about average for the local agencies that participate in the KELPERS pension. So, what that does is it helps offset the liability. It also demonstrates that we have a plan for funding that unfunded liability, and that gets presented in our financial statements. And the trust has a different set of rules for investments, and that was the phase we did previously, was to adopt an investment policy, which gives us much wider investment options and allows flexibility for higher investment earnings. So, what all of those things do collectively is, presents a better picture, that basically we have a plan for funding this and for becoming sustainable, and that is generally looked upon favorably by credit rating agencies. So, those are all things that are a benefit of participating in this trust. So, as I mentioned, we, at the last meeting, first phase was to adopt the investment policy for the trust. At this meeting, we were talking about, we have talked about previously, about an initial contribution of about $5 million, and that has been identified as a commitment of general fund balance. As of June 30th, each year, we come back and we commit certain portions of general fund balance for specific purposes, that being one of them. And when we had an independent actuary working for us calculate out how quickly we could pay down that unfunded liability, we had a target of about 20 years, and the numbers worked out to where if we did an initial contribution of $5 million right now, in 20 years, all things remaining unchanged, we could pay off that unfunded liability. Now, all things remaining unchanged is not gonna happen. There are various components and various variations of assumptions that go into PERS calculation of the liability, but the way we've structured this program is to look at it on an annual basis as part of the budget, so that we can then decide on new actuarial information, taking into account any changes that PERS has made with their actuaries, calculating out what the liability is gonna be and what their earnings are gonna be, to come up with different options for how we need to either contribute more to the trust or leave it as is, so that we still have the goal of being 100% funded after 20 years. So, the recommended action tonight is to adopt a resolution that approves participation in the trust, to authorize the city manager to execute the trust agreement, and to approve the $5 million appropriation from the general fund committed fund balance to fund the initial contribution to the trust. So, that completes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we have representatives from PARs, the trust administrator, available for questions as well.
And I, we need to say, we did have a study session or two on this, and council discussed it for a couple of hours before. So, with that, other questions? Mr. Tremblay?
Just to confirm that the $5 million is part of the $47.5 million projected general fund balance that was committed by the council last meeting per GASB?
Correct.
That's correct.
All right. I have to, just in a rhetorical, I have to admit, I chuckled a little bit, chuckled a little bit when you said that things can change. I kind of equate PERS with being the character of Lucy in a Charlie Brown cartoon, because I think they just move the goalposts all the time.
Any other questions? Mrs. McDonald?
I just want to clarify something, just to make sure I'm remembering right. If in the future, a council was in a situation where they needed funds to make their annual contribution, they could draw from this, because it's for the purpose of the pensions. So, it does have that little bit of an out if the money were, hopefully not, but if it were needed. Okay. And you talk about PERS changing, you know, I remember when we were super-funded, so you never know. Maybe it'll go that way again, we'll see.
Who knows?
That was before the stock market crash and, you know, all you-know-what went to heck, but, you know, we can, I fully support this. I think it's something we need to do to show that we're trying to manage that and to get ourselves in a position where we don't have that unfunded liability.
Any other questions? Mr. Kildee?
Yeah, Mark, what's the best way to make this payment? Is it to make it directly to PARs? Is it to wait until we get billed? Have we decided how we're gonna make this payment?
We would make the initial contribution as of, as soon as we can take it to them as a one lump sum payment, and the plan is to ease that money into the market, not to put it all in at once, but this is similar to what we did with our OPEB trust, is over a period of, I think we did six months to gradually ease those dollars into the different various investment vehicles that were part of our investment policy adoption.
Are we gonna make that payment directly to PARs, or are we gonna make it?
Directly to PARs, yes.
And it'll be like a one lump sum payment, then?
Correct.
Okay.
A deposit, still our money, right?
Correct.
Mr. Morgan?
You know, the way the market's going now, up, down, up, down, it's unbelievable. You don't know which way to go if you're investment people out there with our money, because you don't know, is continue gonna go up and earn, you know, more, or is it gonna take a dip? So, it's good luck.
That's how we have them.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yeah, I'm hoping for good luck, too, Mr. Morgan, but, I mean, the fact is, depending on what the city earns and depending on what the PERS discount rate is, I mean, that's gonna be indicative of whether or not this is successful or not, and one of the things I wanted to ask finance staff, in the report itself, it talks not just about utilizing this trust as a vehicle, but also the potential for accelerating contributions, and I'll just add, as appropriate, to PERS, to pay down this liability. And I know that I will be asking, every time we talk about this, is that option being considered for some accelerated contributions? And we have had many, many conversations about that and about the advisability of doing it, but I think we need to continue to talk about it, because that is... it, but I think we need to continue to talk about it, because that is a reasonable thing to talk about in conjunction with doing this. This isn't a panacea, as far as I'm concerned, it's a good thing, but it's not the only option.
That's correct. As PERS does an annual actuarial valuation of the PERS program and the costs and their investments that they have towards that pension expense or liability, we have our separate set of actuaries that are calculated on an annual basis as well, to make sure that we're still on target for that 20-year, 100% funded ratio.
I have one other question.
Mr. Kildy?
Got one other, just a quick question while you're here. I know this is a relatively new program, so we really don't know what, you know, the percentage interest rates that, you know, we're going to get and the percentages. Is there any, you know, historical data that you're aware of, that we know within the 20 years? I know we were hopeful that we'll be able to, if all things remain relatively the same as they are now, but can we expect the interest rate that we cure to be somewhat contiguous with what's the last 15, 20 years are? Is there?
Since inception with our OPEB program, OPEB trust program, similar concept, we started that in 2009, and we have earned an average of, I believe, close to 8% on that program. Now, again, you always hear the disclaimer that that's not indicative of future performance, but that is the past performance that we've experienced. Now, the program that we're entering into right now has a target of, I think it's 5.6% earnings. So that is kind of the benchmark, the target that we want to achieve. And this is over a 30-year period, so as things change, that's how we adjust when we look at it each year, looking at different variables and looking at new actuarial valuations, whether we need to put more money in or whether we're close enough to meeting our goal.
Okay, thank you.
What are the wishes of council? Mrs. McDonald?
I would move to adopt a resolution approving participation in the Public Agencies Post Employment Benefits Trust, administrated by Public Agency Retirement Services, PARS, and authorize the city manager to execute the trust agreement and approve an appropriation from the general fund committed fund balance in the amount of $5 million to the non-departmental account budget to fund the initial contribution to the, it's a long one, to the PRSP trust.
Second.
The motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. So now we're going back to, under City Council, Item C, Campaign Disclosure Statements and Statements of Economic Interests, Ordinance Requiring Electronic Filing. Can we have the staff report, please?
This, excuse me, this item is coming back from a study session we had a while back about campaign finance regulations, and at that time, the council directed staff to go out and look at the possible options for electronic filings. And so we did that. There are two companies that have been qualified by the Secretary of State to provide electronic filing systems, South Tech and NetFile. We got bids from both those companies. The recommendation is to, if you're interested at this time, to move forward with South Tech Systems, and we selected them for two reasons. One, they were the less expensive of the two companies, and also, they are the one that's used within the county. So both the county uses it, and the city of TO and the city of Ventura uses it, and it seems like it would be a benefit if we're all utilizing the same system. So the government code allows us to mandate electronic filings if we have a system that's approved by the Secretary of State, and if we adopt an ordinance that mandates the use of the systems. So the ordinance before you would do that, and staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance. We'd bring it back for second reading at the next meeting. It would go into effect 30 days after that, and my hope is that it would be up and running for the first pre-election filing in September. I can't guarantee that the prior election filings would make it into the system, but if we could, we would work towards that goal. And I am suggesting that we mandate it, but I'm also offering that me and my staff will help everybody walk through this process, so that we don't set it up and make you all do it on your own. So the hope and goal is that we can get you all on board and it works successfully.
So this will not be in effect for the ones that are due July 30th or 31st?
There's no way that would happen.
Okay, I just want to make that clear to everybody, that those will be hard copy filings.
Those will be hard copy. And some of the candidate filings that are going to occur before the September date will likely have to be hard copy filings, too.
Okay. That being said, are there any questions? I have, I have one. And I did notice that it does say, on page big four, under D, that if the electronic system is not capable of accepting a particular type of statement or other document, that it could be in an alternative format. During the study session, I asked if you could check with the company if you were looking at the same one as the county, because past years, I've had problems. Every year, the county for Fox Canyon wants me to file through them, and every year, their system hasn't seemed to have been able to take the fact that I have to go on to another sheet and another sheet with properties I own, and that, and have you discussed that, and have they worked on that particular part of it?
So I did. I talked both to the provider, South Tech Systems, and I talked to the city of TO who uses it, and neither one of them understands why you wouldn't be able to file the multiple properties on the form. They even said that people with like numerous, numerous investments that are reportable, they actually can import an Excel spreadsheet, and it'll just populate the form, so people could have tons and tons of investments, so.
Well, all I know is that the one that talks about real property, Brian at the county, who was acting county clerk for a while, maybe he was the county clerk, couldn't figure out how to get anything other than invalid entry for me, so.
Well, we are going to hopefully make that work for you.
Okay, so maybe they can explain it to me, or you can, or somebody can, if we still have the problem, or maybe, maybe they've addressed it.
Yes, maybe they have fixed it. And that just reminds me, I did distribute the red folder with the requested change to the.
In B?
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Tremblay?
Just to clarify right now, the county of Ventura has the online system, but it's voluntary.
Yes.
So you can still file, file paper statements with the county. To your knowledge, what are the other cities doing? So for example, are the cities of Thousand Oaks and Ventura, is their online filing mandatory?
You know, I did not check into that. I know the county says voluntary.
I like the increased transparency of this, and I think that's important. I'm just curious as to whether or not, if we go ahead and approve this, whether we will be the only city out there that's mandating it.
We won't be the only city out there.
In the county?
In the Ventura County area.
We may.
Any other questions?
Can I ask one, just following up on that? If you had someone who didn't have the capability of doing it, and said, you, I need to file it by paper, could they come in and have assistance in doing it?
Yes, yeah, we're going to offer our assistance to help people do it. And I asked, did we have to have to provide a computer in City Hall to do that? And technically, no, because they have access at a library where they, so everybody has access to a computer, but we will make ourselves accessible and let the people into our office and make sure that they make it through the first filing.
But there are still people who don't know how to use a computer, believe it or not.
So they need that extra help, but as long as you're willing to ensure that everyone, whether, no matter what their level of expertise, has the ability to do it and do it easily. I think that's kind of what you're going at, right, that it's?
Yeah, that, yes, Mrs. McDonald, is kind of what I was going at. And I think, too, it's fair to say, having done lots of filings in the past, like all of you, that there are going to be, they're going, this is going to increase the workload for the city clerk's office.
Momentarily.
No, it won't be momentarily, because if it's mandated, I don't think, I don't think so. I think it will be an increased workload incrementally, possibly over time, because you're going to have, in every election, you're going to have filers who are new to the system, or you're going to have an FPPC form that like PERS changes over time.
Yes.
So I do think we have to have some sensitivity, if we mandate it, what the workload, the increased workload is going to be for the city clerk's office. And that's why I don't want to, I want to be sure that that's been factored into account in terms of staff's recommendation.
Yes, in fact, it has. Jeffrey and I have had several conversations about this, and she can go on and explain, you know, what she gains from this process with electronic filing.
Oh, and I know it's increased transparency.
No, 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 it's workload also. Jeffrey?
Yeah, it's going to significantly reduce our workload, additionally, the transparency part of it. So it automatically posts all those reports to the website and redacts all that information that we would otherwise have to redact to post to the website. So that's the other thing, if we have some people that are filing electronically, and then some people that are filing hard copy, just to make everybody the same, we'd have to then take all the hard copy forms, redact all the information, and post it so that everybody's treated equally. So I do realize that it is going to take effort on our part to get people used to the system, but I still think overall, it's going to reduce our staff time.
Any other questions?
Just one, because I do this all the time. You do a document, take a picture, send it to you, and put it in. Same document that you've got in there, but so can they take one and send it to the site of the whole form?
So they, that's not how the system works.
Okay.
It's kind of like, what they're likening to is like QuickBooks, where you actually put your entries into a ledger, and then you hit submit, and it populates the form, and then it takes that form and it posts it out on the website, but redacts all the information that's not allowed to be visible on the website. So it's not as if you're, it's not as if it's taking the hard copy form and converting it. It really is, it's a very robust system that's going to take your input and put it back out.
Okay.
Just one more. I'm assuming you get to review it, what it looks like before they hit that send button?
Yes.
First thing to teach people.
People get to, not her, you said you.
Well, actually, you'll get to.
That's what I mean, that we'll get to.
If you haven't checked a box, it won't send, so it'll, it'll send you back an error message that says, you know, on this schedule, whatever, you, you haven't transferred the number, you haven't checked the box, or.
So it doesn't check.
Right. So they say that like almost never is something filed wrong, because.
Oh, well, you can type in a wrong number for income or something, and be wrong.
But we wouldn't even know you put in the wrong number.
Right, right.
The system's going to take your number as correct, but it's not going to let you file an inaccurate report.
Not a complete report, is probably a better way, not, yeah. You're saying accurate.
Okay, what are the wishes of council?
It's a request to reading of the title, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is an ordinance, so I will request a reading of the title.
This is ordinance number 1154, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Camarillo, adding chapter 2.52 to the Camarillo municipal code relating to the electronic filing of campaign disclosure statements and statements of economic interests.
Move the approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item D, under City Council, Policy 104, Scheduling City Council Meeting Agenda Items Amendment. Can we have the staff report on that one, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following a policy committee review and a subsequent study session, and further revisions, staff is now coming forward with the revised policy. It clarifies the following issues when it comes to placing something on the agenda. If there is a matter that a city council member wants to place on the agenda that is within the city's subject matter jurisdiction, then the request must be agreed upon by at least one other council member before the item will be placed on the agenda. I think that's all pretty straightforward, just a two-step process. The next one's a little more complicated, it's a three-step process, and it involves those matters that fall outside of the city's subject matter jurisdiction. It goes like this. If a council member requests to place an item on the agenda that falls outside of the city's subject matter jurisdiction, the request must be agreed upon by at least one other council member, and then the city manager will place an item on the city council agenda, seeking the council's consideration to schedule the matter for a future city council meeting. So in other words, what happens is, is that a council member requests that an item be placed on the agenda, another council member needs to agree with that. But before there's a full-blown, full-blown discussion on that, with a city's, with a staff agenda report, it comes back with just minimal information for a majority of the council to decide that it wants to put it on a future agenda with supporting information from the city manager's office to discuss the matter. So it's a three-step process. And then finally, a member of the public may request that a matter that is within the city's subject matter jurisdiction be placed on the agenda by providing the request in writing with appropriate backup material to the city manager, who will transmit, who will transmit the information to the city council. The city council could then review it, come back to a city council meeting, and then if two council members request that it be placed on the agenda, then it could be placed on the agenda. If I don't get any response on this, and it doesn't come back to a council meeting, then I will timely inform the requister about the disposition of his request. Sometimes there are requests that, we get many requests all the time, that don't necessarily need council approval. It's something that a department can handle, for example, or it may be code compliance-related, and we just take care of these things. But for those matters where someone wants something on the agenda, and it falls within the subject matter jurisdiction, this is the process that we're proposing, and one that you discussed and approved in study session.
Other questions?
I do, Your Honor.
Mrs. McDonald?
Oh, sorry. I'm a little, I think we need some more, some more clarification on the section having to do with the members of the public, because you say the item must be submitted in writing with appropriate backup material to the city manager for transmittal to the city council for their information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you sent it to us, so then what happens?
Well, at that point, members of the council have the opportunity to consider it. You know, if it's something that you feel like it should be on the agenda, then you bring it back to the council meeting. You say, I saw this item, I think it should be on the agenda. If you can get somebody to agree with you, another council member to agree with you, then we'll put it on the agenda.
It goes back up to the process stated under.
I think that's what's missing, because if I'm a member of public reading this, it's just telling you, you're going to send it to us for our information. I think you need to go and say, okay, then, a council member should bring it to the full council, or something like that. Well, no, one council member brings it, and the two agrees, right? Because that's what you're doing above. One person can bring it, two agree. Because it just kind of leaves it hanging, you send it to us, but I didn't know what we were supposed to, who, what happened next.
Yeah, I'll take it back to policy committee.
Well, I don't know, if you have to go back for that simple.
Oh, are you sure?
Well, I'm not the policy committee, but I think if you just add those couple of words after it, so.
What, couple of words?
I think you just said it, but let's try again then. So it's for, city council for their information.
Period.
Period. Let's see. You could go back to the, a city council member, I'm trying to use the same words as above. A city couns, you don't want to say if interested, because that doesn't sound, a city council member should then, or. member should then, or could then bring the count, the item to the full city council for consideration, or something like that?
Could then refer. A request.
Because it's up, because I think what you're saying is up to the city council at that point, not the city manager.
That's correct.
You've given us the request, now we need to do something.
That's correct.
And that's what I think is missing.
And you may, or you may not do something. You may decide that this is not an item that...
You may not do it.
...the council needs to.
Yes.
I understand, Mrs. McDonald's comment. I'm just thinking, maybe it's...
It would be better, it might be more efficient from a time standpoint.
Going back again.
If we send it back to policy committee, we can labor on the, on the language and then bring it back.
Does it kind of make sense what my concern is?
Yeah.
Kind of left it hanging.
Okay.
All right.
So this will go back to, is, is that what the council wishes? I mean, we've heard from one council member, so we got four others.
I don't think we're in a hurry, so...
Okay.
If it makes, satisfies everyone, I think referring back would be fine.
Let's bring it back and get some more clarifications.
Okay, so this is now back to policy committee.
Okay.
And we have completed finance, so now we're down to public works, consent item H.
And we can, if you want me, I was the one that pulled it. Do you want me to tell you why I pulled it?
Yes, could you please tell them why? We don't need a full agenda item if you just have one little question.
It's a big question, but I think...
Okay.
Let me see, which two can go together?
Landscaping improvements, City Hall and Carmen.
So H and I, yes. So H and I, basically, I have the same question or concern. What's bothering me, let me get to it, is that we, we put the landscape for City Hall and Carmen out to bid. We got a bid, we accepted it, and then we also gave them a contingency. Now we're back again, which I personally, at the time, thought it was a fairly good-sized contingency, because I believe it was 10%, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
So we already gave you 10%, so now they're back asking for more, but we're really not being told exactly why. We now want another 20%? If 21, well, you can tell me what the percentage is now. Before it was 21 and now it's 40. So that's what's bothering me, is, is we do a bid, we give you a contingency, we're back for another increase, but yet we're really not explained why. Did they miss bid? Did we add a scope of the work?
Uh, no, it's, several components related to it. As we've been progressing through, especially the City Hall project, there have been areas that have been, as we clear out the landscaping that was being taken away, and then now starting to plant back new, some of it is dependent on the size of plants that we get are available at the time also. You know, we, we select, well, number one is based on what's available at the time of construction, so that's, plant selection is actual size of them, whether it's a one-gallon or five-gallon, sometimes a different size is only available, so, and then they're located and planted, and we've identified areas where we need to fill in a little bit more to make it the best-looking project as possible. There was also a, actually a resident brought us, to our attention, a concern with a, a plant that was existing out there that can possibly be an irritant, that it gives off a, and, and irritating, I don't know if it's a, what do you call it?
Dave, I brought that up from a citizen concern. There is a particular, it's euphorbia, and if it is ingested, for example, by a child, it can cause a numbness and a, and a choking sensation. So we want to, want to make sure that we don't present a safety concern.
Right, so those are coming to light during construction, so we've removed those, added in additional plants to fill that out. The other item, we've had some unforeseen situations with some electrical conduit that was hit and needed to be repaired, so typical contingency-type work there. We're also enhancing around the, around the sign. The original design was to maintain the existing landscaping and rock around the entrance sign. As we've implemented the new landscaping, it's gonna look better to redo that area, so we're including that. And so the original, also, it's, it's two separate projects that we bid and awarded as one with a total contingency, and we split up that contingency proportional between the two projects. The City Hall project being the smallest portion of the contract, the median project being longer and quite a bit more. So with these first, the, the initial change orders that we know we have for City Hall is going to exceed that proportional contingency that we have for the City Hall, to where we want to add more, essentially in case. We don't, you know, right now, hopefully, don't plan to use all of that, but so that we don't have to come back again or later, you know, to, to bring back additional change order approvals and authorization. We want to cover it now, once, when we know this item. And then the companion item on the median project, which again, is longer and larger, and we're, you know, maybe a third of the way through on that one, so still some distance to go up, up Carmen to the end, where we may possibly have unforeseen contingency work needed there. So, but all that to say, the other companion item on, on I is to increase the agreement that we have with our landscape architect, who is, is also providing us more construction phase services than we anticipate, originally anticipated were gonna be needed. That's based on staff availability, project management needs for other capital projects that we have going on at the time. But we've got a lot of work happening right now, and if there was time to utilize our consultant here with, with more construction phase services that was, than originally anticipated.
Okay. Well, it would have been, to me, it would have been helpful if you'd explain that in the staff report, so that we understand why. I mean, some things truly weren't foreseen. You started out with what personally, I think, should have been in the bid to begin with. When you hire someone to do the job and they have a design, that's what we should be paying for and getting, and if they can't get the plans, to me, that's their problem, but...
But you always liked larger plans.
I do, but it should have been done in the first place. I mean, so I guess it just bothered me. I read it and I had no idea what we were spending or why, what didn't work. So I think in the future, if you could give us a little bit more of a scenario about what occurred, because things do happen, I, I understand that. But just to give you more money, just for the sake of giving you more money, is hard to do.
Understood.
What are the wishes of the council with, oh, Mr. Kildee?
Is this the last one that, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but is this the last one that you can foresee that we'll have to amend this?
Yes, right, that, as far as, right, as far as the crystal ball shows now, yes.
What are the wishes of the council with respect to items H and I on the consent?
I'm with the approval.
Second.
The motion is second, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item L, water conservation support services, did you have a question?
I did on, on this one. I'm just wondering, at this point in time and has, with all that we have done in the past, do we still need to spend $100,000 a year for the next three years, basically doing, I couldn't see anything new, and are we just doing the same thing?
Primarily, yes, and this agreement also does allow for if something does come up that we need help with. And incidentally, we will be using this consultant to help further identify and evaluate a, a program for buckets for people to put in their showers, you know, that's been mentioned before, and it, it's a little bit more involved to make sure we end up with the, the right program for that.
Bucket?
Exactly. A, a large five-gallon bucket isn't necessarily the best thing to encourage people to fill up and lug out of their home.
A lot of people can't lift that.
Exactly.
You start to say you can't have a very big bucket for a lot of, excuse me, a lot of ladies who can't...
You have to give choices.
Up and downstairs.
And, and yes, we have made a lot of progress on water conservation. However, the, the public message, the enforcement, the follow-up with residents is a continual need.
So it's a not to exceed, so you're gonna evaluate the program and it's gonna change, so it's not just the same thing over and over again. As something new comes up, then you'll tailor it to the needs at the time.
Correct.
Mr. Morgan?
One of the programs I was, I thought was kind of unique, not unique, but something that maybe people can do this in the future. I was reading from Ventura's, what they were studying for their meeting the other night, you know, all the things they wanted to do. And the water from your, from your dishwasher and so on and so forth, being used on your plants, and a system that can be able to take it from a storage facility, from your, washing your clothes, and it, it does exist, but we may want to start looking at that as being something we give to people to show if they can, this is what can be done too, and what the cost would be. Not just carrying this, but you're using the other water.
Our building codes allow it. We changed our building codes a few years ago.
I know.
But you mean...
Allowing, I mean, educating people, not just on buckets.
Educating people.
But educating people on these other uses of, of water that can recycle and use in your plants.
Yeah, that'd be one thing that could be considered. I don't know that...
Yes, that would be...
We need to get specific about the different programs in this.
I believe you mentioned, commonly referred to as a gray water system.
Yes.
And, and it is a little bit more involved and needs to be, meet permit requirements, code requirements, so it is quite a bit more involved, and that is something, if, if we need to explore further conservation measures, we could do that.
Sure saves a lot of water.
What are the wishes of the council? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tremblay.
Let me come at it from a different angle, Mr. Clotzel. The city has how much now in, in grant monies for the desalter project from the state? 15, 15 million? 15 million, right. Would it be fair to say that a recipient, a grant recipient's demonstration that it has a robust water conservation program is an important factor in the awarding of state grants?
I would see that be a favorable item to point out.
Is it a fact, well, I don't know. Is it part of the application process that the city has to demonstrate that it has?
Lucy's nodding yes out there.
You get more points.
Okay, so there's, and I understand that question, I just, I'm trying to think of the value that the city is getting of, as we all do, for purpose of this. So I was coming at it, I'm coming at it partially from, from that direction. So what this contract actually does for us, it allows us to continue to represent in our grant applications for the desalter and other water projects that the city is, has a robust approach to water conservation, correct?
The message is, water conservation is not a seasonal occurrence, it needs to be a way of life. So it's water efficiency, and so water conservation is here to stay. And those regulations, the governor recently signed orders, or basically, stipulated that, that are, with new regulations coming down regarding water efficiency.
Right.
Basically, setting budgets for, for landscape and indoor and outdoor use.
So even though that's not a, even though it's, this isn't a, an, an item that is noted in the staff report or the professional services agreement, it is a value-added, I'll call it a value-added benefit, right?
Yes.
Okay. And I don't think I was saying we shouldn't have it, I just didn't want it to be the same thing we've done for, that we already have. So they are gonna develop more and new and expand or look at things differently is where I was going with it. Because when I read it, it looked the same as...
So... Can I add something? So ever since we've come back to stage one, our water use within the city is slowly increasing. So keeping that enforcement and keeping the word out that water conservation is, is here to stay, basically, is trying to maintain the, the gain that we got two years ago.
And there's still a lot of water running to waste out there.
Exactly, exactly. So keeping personnel and, and city staff from putting out reminders and, and things of that nature, and keeping outreach materials out and things like that, help keep the word out, and kind of the ideas that water efficiency is, is, is really good for the environment.
Well, it didn't help that the governor said the drought is over, and yet when he signs another bill requiring more and more conservation, there's no big deal about it because he doesn't want to retract what he said.
Exactly, exactly. By the way, Metropolitan Water District has now recently put in a turf program now. So again, sir, they're actually reimbursing folks for changing out their turf. So that's another area that is gonna get a lot of questions from the residents.
Who's doing this?
Metropolitan.
Metropolitan Water District.
And applies to our area also?
Yes. So they're establishing, it's not as aggressive as it was three years ago, but it is something that is gonna be incentivizing the turf replacement commu, you know...
Okay, what are the wishes of the council? Yes?
I, I would move to authorize the city manager to execute professional service agreement number 2018-65 with Green Media Creations, Inc., for water conservation support services for an amount not to exceed $100,000 per fiscal year for three years for a total authorized expenditure of $300,000. I'll second.
Motion is second, please vote. We will be recessing to a study session in a minute, but we also have a closed session on the agenda. And just in case there's time, I will ask the city attorney to please read the conditions under which we will meet in closed session.
Yes, we just have one closed session item. It's a conference with real property negotiator, the authority is government code section 54956.8, the property address is 228 Lightwood Street in Camarillo. The agency negotiators are listed in the agenda, as is the negotiating party. Under negotiation are price and terms of payment.
Okay, and so with that being read, we will recess to a study session, and if there's time, a closed session. And we'll be back here at 7:30.